Welcome, everybody. We are going to get started with our rescheduled Board of Selectmen regular meeting for April. It's Thursday, April 11th, and we're going to start this meeting at 7:01. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're going to move on to item two, Public Speak. We will start with Diane Grenier. All right, we'll circle back to Diane because she's probably having issues. Jeff Ballard.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, well, I've been asked by the, um, I don't know what I should be saying because I'm on the agenda for.
We'll bring it in on the agenda, Jeff. If you have anything you want to add that's outside of that topic, you can bring it forward or you're good then. All right. Diane Grenier, are you available? No. Linda Fish.
All set.
All right. Jody Gross.
Hey, Jeff, nice to see you.
Good to see you again. How are you?
Wonderful. I'd like to actually take a few minutes to voice some support for, well, first of all, introductions. I'm Jody Gross. I've been in Andover for about nineteen years now, and I'm before the Board of Selectmen here to provide some public comment in support of the Joshua Trust in town of Andover, open space properties that's being discussed this evening, talking about putting a looped trail somewhere between Skinner Hill and Wheeling and Long Hill and Dogwood Drive. I live on Dogwood Drive. I really wanted to impress upon the Board of Selectmen three very important reasons why I support the establishment of this trail at this particular property. The first is its access to our town land. You know, having an actual entry point established to access the land via a trailhead really provides great opportunity for walking, hiking, for town residents like me. Number two is that it's really for walkers and hikers only. I love my brethren that are bikers, but candidly, I'm tired of getting run over on the airline trail, or if I go over to Coventry, to the state forest and run through bikers. I mountain bike myself, but having a small place like that to just walk and hike in a low-impact trail would be wonderful. The third reason is really it promotes safety and in health for our town residents. One of our town selectmen recently posted a picture of someone walking on Long Hill Road. Thank goodness they were bright, bright, bright shirt on. And thank you, by the way, Board of Selectmen, who got us some vests. Long Hill is not a road for people to be walking on. It really isn't. There's no sidewalks. There's no painted lines. So this is the perfect opportunity for Andover to add another option for recreation and for, for, for walking in a, in a not dangerous area. And quite frankly, it's really cost-effective. So, you know, I guess as an avid walker, hiker, typical representative of the thirty-two-hundred people that live in this town, I asked this elected governing body to really support the idea of opening up access to a loop trail on the property. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to support the project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jody.
Jeff, can I get, can I speak as a member of the public during public speak? To be around on the record?
Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, I just got aware of these changes to this trail and how it, I mean, I can see Wheeling Road from my backyard, and this parking area is going to be right inside of my house. I'm going to have people walking through my, like, right on my property line. It's all been changed to move up into the wetlands area. And it's all on town property now. It has nothing really to do with Joshua's Trust anymore. And I just got this packet yesterday or the day before, and none of the property owners have been notified. And you know, I understand, Jody, that you support the trail, but it's not in your backyard. And like, I bought this property, I bought this property for privacy and to enjoy my backyard and not have people walking through it. And I'm like the other property owner on the other side. I will not support this one hundred percent. I'm vehemently against it. Because originally, when we did this, it was not going to be up towards the neighborhood and to my adjoining neighbors. So going forward, I am, I'm against this. I don't think it's a good idea. It impacts all the neighbors in my neighborhood. Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna just keep going. So give us a second, Jody, and you can come back. I'll actually give you a second chance.
Absolutely. I appreciate rebuttal.
Yeah, no problem. Sherry?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I am supporting the changes because it's the, I oppose, I oppose the parking lot because it's almost on my property line. And I have serious personal concerns. And Wheeling, where it is, there's not a lot of people and I understand his, his feelings, but I think it's, it's better for everybody because it's affecting, well, it's affecting the neighborhood. And it is more out of the way than it is over where you had originally put it next to people's houses. That's, I feel. And it's more feasible for everybody.
Anything else, Sherry?
Just especially serious safety and protective concerns.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Bill Penn, I know you're a resident.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Yeah, I'm speaking actually about the Joshua's Trust property. I'm speaking first as a, as a resident. You know, we, we, I, I, I heard a lot of what Jody had to say about putting it, putting in this trail. You know, I, I think it's a, it's a valuable little, little trail that can be used by the people, especially by the people in the neighborhood. And I'm sure when John talks about the property in the, along the agenda, he can give more, elaborate how, how common, how much use this type of trail typically gets, et cetera. But as a, as an Andover resident, I strongly support this. I live right next to the rail trail, which gets probably over a hundred, two-hundred times more people parking by my house, going by my house, et cetera. And it's not really that big a deal. So I support that. I'm also speaking as a Joshua Trust person that, you know, we met with the people who had issues and addressed them, and this is one of the ways. And again, John is going to, I expect, elaborate more on that during his discussion. The other part I wanted to talk about was the e-bike program that has been, has been proposed or suggested. And I'd like to voice support for that e-bike program, especially with the possibility of the multi-use path along three, along, excuse me, Route 316. We think this is an opportunity to get more people on the trail to learn about e-bikes and the safe use of e-bikes. So I also support that endeavor, which is on tonight's agenda. Thank you for your time, everybody.
All right, thanks, Bill. Kimberly Persson?
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Okay, Lisa Kurtz?
Well, thank you.
All right, Joanne Ebert?
All set, just listening. Thank you.
Okay. Sherry, if you could mute yourself, that would be great so that we could continue on. Diane Grenier?
Can you hear me?
We can. There you go.
Okay, okay, good. I'm always having problems with this audio. No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Jody, if you would, if you could keep it brief, I'll give you another go.
I'm sorry, I'll pass. I know there's public speak at the end too, correct?
Sure, there is. Okay. All right. Did I miss anyone? I don't think I did. All right, we're going to move on to item. Well, there should have been, well, we can't do additions and agenda, additions and deletions, my bad. Before we move on, I would like to thank everyone for moving the meeting from Monday. It was a, it was a great Monday. I hope everyone got to enjoy the basketball game and watch UConn win their second national title in a row. If I had my way, we would sit there and have a Danny Hurley day in town and get him to come out to our town, maybe walk our trails somewhere. So let's move on. Item three, Boards and Commission Presentations of the Library Board of Directors. Diane, are you representing the library?
I am representing the, the library board.
Go ahead, Jeff.
We've been negotiating with, with Daniel Polino to get a eighteenth-century tall clock for loan and display. It was this eighteenth-century Daniel Burnap, you know, from town who had a workshop in, in the Attica Post Farm. We've had it appraised by Art Liverant. And he, the only space, the only wall space in the library that we have really available for that display of clock is to the right of the entrance as you're heading out. It's a small wall. Daniel Polino is concerned about the traffic pattern there and wanted and threw an email to us and to me, wanted to know if there's an alternative space to display the clock. He's concerned about the, the traffic pattern there. My, my, my answer to that would be, would it be possible when the new community senior center is completed and little use is being made of the community room, could we display that clock, which is significant Andover history, in the, on a wall, in the, in the old community room? As an alternative to the library?
Does any of the members of the Board of Selectmen have any issue with potentially displaying that in the community room?
Um, I don't know if I, if I want to say yes or no now. Did we, I don't think we've ever talked about, because it's a little early now. The community center, senior center isn't, you know, furnished, and we haven't talked about what we're taking from the other community rooms. So what's, Jeff, what's the timing on? You know, it, where's the clock right now? Is it at somebody's house?
No, it's, it's, there's a master clock repairman, whatever, restorer. His name is Mr. Crump, and we have the case in the basement of the library, but the works have been sent to Mr. Crump. Art Liverant, who's very familiar with the Burnap clocks, suggested some repairs to be made, and that's where it's at now. This has been ongoing for probably better than a year. I kind of, the board and myself are insisting that we have a contract with him. And I have spoken to Eric about having Dennis O'Brien draw up a contract before we even think about displaying the clock, so everybody's on the same page, and it's a legal document.
When the clock, when the clock's done being repaired, what's, is there a time, timeline on when that, that'll be done?
No, the, the last email that I received is that Mr. Crump is having some personal problems, that it is ready, but we, at the library, the feel that, that we want a contract in place before, before it's set up and displayed so that everybody's clear about our, our responsibilities and his responsibilities.
Okay. Could you take a picture of the clock? The clock tower, so that we understand what we're talking about, and then if possible, and if anybody on the board doesn't mind, if we put this on our agenda for next month, so that we could understand the size, Jeff, of this. And the only other question I have is, did you speak with Scott Yeomans about displaying it at the museum?
No, I have not. But I have concern with, with a forty-thousand-dollar clock that's working and, and, and whatever.
Understood, understood. So that's, I got it.
It has to be stored inside, Jeff?
Excuse me?
That has to be stored inside, probably, right?
Almost, most definitely, yeah.
And its value is forty thousand right now?
I believe it's thirty-eight thousand.
It's one of a kind?
Yes, Colin, his, Daniel Burnap, and the library is Burnap-Skinner library, as you probably all know. So it's significant to the library history, to Andover history. He had a clock shop in South Windsor or East Windsor, but this clock has on the dial, on the face, Andover, which is unusual and rare. And Art Liverant has said that he will do a presentation on the history of the clockmaker, the, the person that trained him, that came over from England, that avoided the Tea Party in Boston, set up shop in Norwich. There's a lot of history. And Coventry has a Daniel Burnap clock in their library with Coventry, from my understanding, I haven't seen it. There's also another Burnap clock in the Connecticut Historical Society in Elizabeth Street in Hartford.
Yeah, I think the picture would be, would be helpful, just so we can see the size of it. And I, we probably should talk as a board coming up soon, but what we want to keep in that community room and, you know, what, what we're going to use it for, and then that'll help us decide on a bunch of, a bunch of things, so.
Is there like a, is there like a case, Jeff, that they put it in, or some kind of protective something?
No, no, it just needs to get secured to a wall. It has holes in the back of the case that you access from the inside, and then it just has to be anchored to a wall.
So the, the community center walls aren't, are they, it's not sheet rock, right? Those are?
It is, yes.
It is sheet rock in there?
In the new, the new community center?
I meant the old one. Right? You're talking the town hall community room?
Yes. Yeah. Want to put it in there?
The town hall community room is a concrete block wall.
Concrete wall, yeah.
So we, if it does, does go there, it has to, it has to be secured and stay wherever it is for a long time, because, right, you need certain sheet rock, or sorry, concrete screws to get into those walls?
Yes.
Okay. I, yeah, I think, I think if you can get us a picture, Jeff, that would be helpful so that we can talk a little more next month. And, and we also need to talk as a board what the function of that room's going to be for spacing and, and other things too. So that was, hopefully start that conversation too.
Diane Grenier pointed out that this may not, you know, that he is opposed to having it displayed in the library because of the traffic pattern, and he's been advised by Mr. Crump and Art Liverant that it probably shouldn't go there because of the traffic that it might.
And, and that's understood, Jeff. What we need to do is we need to evaluate it as a board and just, you know, we have to get Eric's opinion and understand where it can go. We would love to take it. I, I understand from a historical perspective, it would be great. We just got to know where it's going, what level of, of traffic it's going to get so that it's viewed and give us a month. I mean, it doesn't sound like you're going to have it fixed, ready and up, and, I mean,
No.
Let us sit there and see what we can do, and we'll keep it on the agenda for next month, and we'll get you an answer on that.
Thank you.
All right. Did you have some more information that you needed? One second. So you were going right into the garden club. That's what I thought. Okay, so you can keep going.
Yeah, I'm asking permission to put up a fence around the garden. I've already spoken with Thad King from the Eastern Highlands, and he has said that as long as I stay five feet away from the leachant field with any of the posts and the fence, he doesn't have a problem with it. Where I am within five feet, he doesn't have a problem with me putting above-ground posts without any holes sitting on the top of the ground. I have already secured funding for the, all the materials through Andover Elementary School grant. So that we, I wouldn't need a line item for the twenty-five-hundred dollars for the materials. I just need permission to put it up.
Does anyone have any issues? I mean, there was information in our packet regarding the school and the grant that they're discussing. Anybody have any problems with what Jeff is asking to do? I mean, we talked about it last month. Any issues?
You need a motion?
Great idea.
You do?
Yeah, okay. A motion to let Jeff and the garden club put up a fence around the garden, and the fence is going to be paid by the school, by grant from the school, and that fence, fence be put in where it's SFI that it can be put in.
One second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Oh, there were lights in here. Okay, Jeff, keep going. Brain question. Rebe?
Yes, Rayson and Dave Gastanian have donated a five-hundred-and-fifty-gallon water collection tank. There's already in place behind the shed. We, we really need to put gutters on that shed, and it would be stupid to put gutters and water collection into that tank before putting a new roof on the shed. Then this goes back to last year's thousand dollars that was cut from our budget.
Okay. So you're now asking for the twenty-five-hundred dollars that was earmarked for the fence to be earmarked now for the shed, roof, and the gutters?
I'm only asking for a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. Okay.
And then, and then the, the rest of the budget request for us, for one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and the, and that should be itemized in the material you got in the first packet.
Okay, but that's next year's budget. You're asking for a thousand dollars somewhere out of this budget?
As soon as, like, as soon as we can get it, the, the supply to the, to the garden.
Understood. Eric, is there any area that we might be able to obtain a thousand dollars for the garden club and the roof and the water collection? Now, Jeff, just so we understand, this would, this would avoid hoses from the new community center?
Not necessarily. We've already, I've already gotten permission from the fire commissions to put gutters and water collection on their shed. It depends on how much it rains, whether we have both a fifteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred gallons of water vessels, you know, accumulated. But we may have to fill, fill the containers with a hose.
Okay. Well, we could do that periodically, but we could do that on the weekends, so there's no interference in activities that are being run at that, at the new building?
That, that is correct. We were running a hose from the fire department and, and running it out and picking it up every time we needed to water the gardens. Okay. The, the tank is the, I'm going to be hard plumbing that five-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tank to the irrigation system next week, and we have a submersible pump that goes in the tank that will supply the pressure and, and distribute the water to the irrigation system at the beds.
I was, I was a little, when I was reading your documentation, I thought you had a thousand gallons that you were going to have access to.
We are, I've, we supposedly have been given the Hartford Foundation grant for the thousand gallons of supply of, of storage. And, and that would also, that grant would also cover the gutters and clutches system on, on the fire shed.
But that, that grant money, isn't that grant due in May? So you wouldn't get that money until?
That is correct. I wouldn't get that until probably June, and I wouldn't get my budget money until, what, July 1st or something?
Okay, so, so just so I understand, this is where I was a little confused. So you want the money to do a five-hundred-gallon tank? The roof and, and to gut, roof and gutters to fill the five-hundred-gallon tank? And you applied for a Hartford, for Hartford Foundation forgiving grant to get a thousand-gallon tank to take it off of the fire department roof?
Correct.
Okay, so, so you're talking about having a total of fifteen-hundred gallons of water available for the community garden for irrigation purposes?
Yes, that is our, that's our goal.
The issue right now is you're asking for a thousand dollars out of the current year's budget to put a new roof and gutters on the shed for the community gardens?
Yes.
Okay. Eric, is there, where could we potentially obtain a thousand dollars out of our current budget? If we wanted to do this? Eric, did you leave us?
I have another question in the meantime.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jeff, the shallow well pump that you're talking about in your, in your write-up?
Yes.
Is that a new well pump that you're looking to put in?
Though, that was part of the foundation, Hartford Foundation grant, yes, shallow well pump and extra all tank, and that is included in the grant money.
But that goes in the tank. It's not something that goes in the ground. It goes in the tank.
Correct. Eric goes, you know, in the shed, and then we, we pump, we pump from, from, from one tank to the next tank, and then out to the garden. We will be using a submersible, like, you know, like a submersible pump, one, one horsepower pump in the five-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tank to pump it out to the garden.
Understood.
So I don't want to put this out there, but I have to ask this question. If, if you don't get the, if you're not receiving the grant money, will that stop you from finishing the project for the gutters and everything else?
If we, I, it's my understanding, and there's not any clarity on it that I've been given, that we've already got, been okayed for the grant, but one person says it's for two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and another person in, in, in the advisory says that we're getting two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five, which was the original estimate for the, for the collection on, on the fire, firehouse.
Okay, Eric, are you with us?
I am with you.
Okay. Eric, is there a potential to obtain or to re-prioritize a thousand dollars that we could potentially provide to the community garden?
Yes, you can take it out of your line item for Board of Selectmen salaries, since you have made the decision that you do not want to draw a salary as a select person. So there is twelve-hundred dollars available from that fund that you could fund community gardens if you so choose.
Perfect. Does anyone have a major problem with that, since I am, I am foregoing the twelve-hundred dollars of, of money?
Thank you, Jeff McGuire.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. No, we got to vote for it. So it's not, it's not on me, but it's available. So well, then I'll make a motion that we we move a thousand dollars from the We move a thousand dollars from the Board of Selectmen's Salary Line item to the community garden to uh allow for the community garden to re-roof the shed and put gutters on the shed to provide for water collection for irrigation.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much. Uh, Jeff, I think you're, uh, are you done?
I am done and I wanted to thank everybody so very much. This has been a been a, a great project and I appreciate your generosity.
Okay, um, thank you, Jeff. Um, uh. And, and Jeff, just as a side thing, make sure that, um. You know, it's very generous of AES also to provide uh some grant funding to assist. Um, um. Please make sure that you work closely with them and prioritize the safety of the children, especially with the still uh construction area that's uh going on down there.
Most definitely. That's our first and utmost concern.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, uh, item four appointments. Eric, do we have any appointments that were, uh, need to be made aware of?
None that I know of and no resignations that I know of.
All right, item five, resignations, none. Uh, item six, town administrator report, Eric.
Okay, so what I wanna do instead of giving you a traditional administrator's report, I just wanna give you an update of what projects are going on right now. Um, it'll allow you to ask any specific questions about that. Um, I'm gonna start with bridge and roadwork projects. Uh, number one, Bunker Hill Bridge Replacement. Um, that road is scheduled to be closed and construction starts February fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five. So basically over next winter, that project uh will begin. Um, Long Hill Bridge Replacement is just about at the thirty percent design phase. We've been told to expect the thirty percent of design phase meetings, um, which is where the, basically the major parameters for the design will be set in place in the next couple of months. Um, I am still pushing for them to consider the light at Hendy as part of that project. Um, I suspect the answer will be no, but I will continue to push it. Um. You know, because frankly, the, the traffic, the current traffic warrants for that don't uh, don't meet the DOT standard. So I don't think they're gonna do it, but I will try. Um, Lake Road at Basola, um, we're going back and forth between myself, the engineer, and Franklin, which is the company that originally surveyed that. Um, we're trying to reduce our costs a little bit by using the existing survey we have instead of going back out in, you know, regathering the data. So it looks like that will be successful. Um, again, the goal would be not to start construction this summer, but to start construction the following summer on that. So.
You, you want us to interrupt you as we you speak, or would you like us to write this stuff down if we have question?
Uh, why don't after each subject, you ask the questions before we move on to the next subject?
Done.
So if you have questions about bunker or long hill, now would be fine.
Yep, um, good.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll go. Is, is it, are we talking, um, Bunker Hill, just the bridge? Or are we talking Bunker Hill, the, the culvert issue?
So the cover issue has been pretty much resolved. Um, it took a lot of material, um, but Public Works has basically completed the culvert repair. Um, you know, at Bunker Hill. So, so that issue has been resolved. Um, you know, it was basically just a big scour pocket that they had to fill. They filled it with really large rock, like thirty inch, uh, you know, thirty inch aggregate, basically, and then backfilled it with smaller stone. Um, I have pictures. I don't have them ready to show you right now, but I can show you pictures of that repair. Um, and I know Jay went back to the wetlands agent today uh and showed him the, the repair. So we get, make sure wetlands, you know, is, is aware of it. I mean, they were notified that we were doing it and the agent signed off on it beforehand, but, you know, now that it's completed, uh, he went back to the agent.
And you're satisfied with that repair for what we need to do moving forward?
Yes, that looks like they did a good job.
Okay. Uh, that would be helpful if you also, um, I know you have open projects that you're gonna update us on and the, and the residents on, but also um update us on uh completed projects or things that you've gotten completed in the last month. That would also help us.
Sure, okay. Okay, um, so Lake Road at Basola, I mean, the, the goal is to be uh in construction, not this summer, the following summer, so that the bills bridge the next two fiscal years. So we have enough money to pay for the completed, uh, completed repairs. And, or completed replacement.
So, but what happened to the data, the prior data? Somebody lost the data or what happened? You were talking about data?
So the data's not lost. So we have Franklin surveyed it. Um, and we are using that data. But um what we have is we have all the PDF files. Um, and what Franklin has to share with the engineering firm is the actual engineering data that went into that, you know? Um, so, so that will take place. Um, we're just working out getting those files transferred. It's not a problem. Um, you know, I had asked that they consider using that survey because when they originally gave us a project outline, they had, you know, a full survey and I went back to NLJ and said, this really isn't appropriate. We already have, we paid for a survey, use that data. So that's kind of what we're going, going with. Um, while they would prefer to use their own surveyors and their own survey data, there's no reason they can't use the pre-existing data, if that answers that question. Okay, and uh we have, we've already talked about uh what is on the docket for this year for roadwork projects. Um, you know, the other one that's going, we're going to have to address sooner rather than later is there's a really big spring in Aspenall Drive that this last year or two, when it's been really wet, you know, we've had like an artesian well coming out the middle of one of our roads on on the Aspenall Drive. So we're gonna need to address that. That will be one of the extra projects. Um, presuming that we do not do the full parking lot uh reclaim and repave for the school, then at a minimum, we're going to replace the basin tops and do the, the uh, some of the basins need a little bit of patching. So Jay is scheduling that also. Um, and then we repave around basins, so it's flatter. Um, if that does get reclaimed, then obviously that would be part of that project and we wouldn't do it independent. Uh, multi-use pathway for Route three sixteen, that's still awaiting grant funding. Um, we are continuing to do the design work on designing that um, using the, the money we already have for the congressional uh legislative set aside.
But when do we know about that, Eric?
Um. I would think we'll have an answer in the next couple of months. Um, but I also think at this point, you know, I think it will get funded. It's not a question of whether it will because the reality is for the first time ever, they had less applications to that program than they have funding available. So short of anything, you know, drastic happening. Now, that funding is, is staggered, so it doesn't mean we're gonna be able to tap that money right away. But so we might not actually get assigned this year, we might not get assigned to twenty-five, twenty-six budget year to actually be able to spend that money, but we will be, you know, allotted it. Um, so ninety percent, more than ninety percent sure we'll have the money for that, which is kind of a cool thing. Uh, community center, um, that's going relatively well. Um, I think there's no question we'll be in and up and running by July one. I suspect it'll probably be a little earlier than that. But uh, but that's coming along fairly well. Um, next up, the, the HVAC updates to the town hall and fire department. Both of those are scheduled to begin somewhere around uh the last week of this month and expected to take between two and three weeks to complete both projects once they got started on it. Um, and then there's gotta be some masonry repair done after that. Um, the trenching for the pipes for the gas and electrical, Jay is anticipating starting on that Monday now that they've got the uh repair to be culvert on uh, on Bunker Hill done. So I'm guessing that project will take at least a week, maybe a little bit longer to complete the trenching, um, but it should be basically in place. And the tanks, they've said we basic, we have to give them two weeks notice when we wanna drop the tanks. So the goal is get the piping in, get that buried, install the tanks. Um, and then they can just run the gas line through the existing conduit. So we should be in reasonably good shape. The other good thing is it will be late enough in the heating season that there's no, no reason we can't go heat pump only. Not the likelihood that we would need the propane backup is pretty small uh during the transition. So the timing for that works out pretty well. So electrical upgrades to the town hall are um, the, the scope of work of what we authorized a couple of months ago is largely complete. Um, we're transition, we have the new backup uh, you know, automatic transfer switch in place, although it's only, you know, manually operated at the moment. Because until we put the piping in, we don't have the control runs. Um, so, but it will function. Um, the old stab block panel is removed. The whole place is cleaned up. Um, and we went through and we ripped out all the old wiring. Um, and they were also managed to finally track down the fault that was preventing the phone line in the elevator from working properly. So all things considered, I think that project came out really well. Um, the one thing we are gonna have to deal with is they, uh, when the the addition was built on the town hall in, uh, what was that, two thousand and eight? They really undersized the connectors to the elevator. Um, so there is gonna have to be something done to address that. Um, they either have to downsize the breakers, um, which I don't think that will work because I suspect the elevator will just trip in a fall or they're gonna have to run new cable to the elevator. Um, so I'm trying to get, uh, um, get, you know, Lenko to, to figure out what has to happen to make that right because that's, that's super not code compliant. Um, everything else is in there is pretty good and we're basically prepped for, uh, you know, for the HVAC install. So I think that, that's been very successful. I've been really happy uh with that. Um, athletic field upgrades. Those, we're still waiting on the committee to come back with the final set of recommendations. And if we pick a date for a town meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll have to get that committee to give their explanation for that. Because that is one of the items that will have to go to town meeting because it does require uh, you know, a, a town contribution, the, the town's on the hook for twenty percent of the total project. Um, so that's the athletic field steepener. Um, Public Works Field Delivery System Upgrade, that's on hold till the next budget cycle. Um, AES bleacher repair. So there was a little bit of a a difference of opinion between the town and the school regarding the project for doing the flooring, uh redoing the gymnasium flooring. AES really wanted the flooring under the bleachers addressed also. So to do that, we basically removed the bleachers from the wall um and examined the flooring behind. And we've now sanded separately the flooring just under the bleachers. And uh, and that has been, you know, coated. Um, so Friday, the bleachers will get moved back in place. And when the rest of the floor gets done, it will be uniform, including what's under the bleachers. So.
How did, how did all of the, the additional coatings go?
Came out really well.
As far as I know, it's okay. I did not look at that project today. I looked at it yesterday. It looked really good. Um, I know that we're coming back in to put two more coats on today. Scott, did you see it after?
Yeah, I, I got a picture of it after, yep.
Yeah.
Really.
And, and.
Looked really good and it was dried already.
Okay, and so when they put the bleachers back, they're gonna level all the bleachers out and fix all of the mechanisms under those bleachers to make them operate properly and level properly?
Yeah, that's, it's gonna be a reattached.
Okay.
The bleachers are all done also.
Okay.
The new seats are on the bleachers. So, um, that should be all set when school starts up Monday, so that shouldn't be an interruption. And then the next time when they come back in in the summer, they will have to move the bleachers. Um, I've also asked for an estimate from Lenko on what it's gonna cost to, uh, you know, to do the installation of the dowraft fans uh for that facility. So hopefully I'll have that um relatively soon. Um, it's really just where the issue that's gonna come in is where the initial, where the fans are powered from now um will have to change. Because the, basically the control, the control mechanisms for the fans, you know, have a maximum run from the controller to the, the individual fans. And they're designed to run pairs of fans. So uh, Rick is going back to the company and asking them basically for an engineering solution to how to run all six sets of the fans off of a single controller. Um, so hopefully we'll have more information on that in the next um, you know, couple of weeks.
We have a switch available on the wall. It's not being used.
Right, one dead switch there.
Yeah, one dead switch.
Is it really a dead switch or the lights that that go to burned out and have never been replaced?
I can't tell you that, but.
I think that's what the janitor thinks. He thinks it's just lights that have never been changed because it's too high for anybody to get to.
Okay.
Um, which we could address when Lenko comes in or whoever comes in. Um, you know, with the lift.
Uh, it would be great if you could have Lenko go look at those lights just to sit there and see if they're LED. And then I would assume we'd have some ever source program that we should be able to participate if they're not LEDs and haven't been switched recently.
Write that down, Eric.
I am.
All right, we're good. Uh.
Um, AES plumbing, design and repair. I really have not made a lot of progress on that. I still haven't really gotten more info from uh Rick Wilson, so I'm still hoping to get that. Um, I had a brief conversation um with an MEP that our town engineer recommended. Um, but that MEP said that was not really his area of focus and he referred me to another MEP at their same firm. So I'm gonna reach out to them. I wanna get at least one or two others.
Has the Board of Education identified which projects they want done first?
As far as I know, not. They were gonna discuss it at their next Board of Education meeting.
Okay.
Nor have they actually transferred the money that was excess in their budget to the town.
Okay.
Um. So the senior transportation new garage project, you know, I went back and forth with uh DECD. I finally filed some paperwork with them. It's now waiting the DECD commissioner's signature. Um. You know, just one step in a long chain. Um, I still don't have a positive response from SHPO. Uh, I did poke them, you know, two or you know, two or three weeks ago to review the documentation they were given on the old building. Um, they had not reviewed it at that point, so I'm going to have to push them a little, little bit more um, on that.
And uh, which, what is the state agency?
Which state agency?
Related to that project, the state agency that's basically identifying this as a uh, a rebuild.
Oh, that's different. The decision that it's a rebuild, that is the Department of Labor.
Okay.
Um, and that's basically it for, for the major projects we have going right now. Um, any questions from you all as a board kind of on, on what we're doing and where we're going?
Uh, from my standpoint, what is your um, um, based upon the situation with public works? Uh, what are you looking at uh, being able to accomplish in the spring and the summer? Or, or what you're, what are you going to have to curtail? So we're all aware of what's going to end up happening.
So we do have an executive session scheduled at the end of the meeting. If we want to talk about specifics of what we're going to have available for public works personnel, maybe we do it there. Um, I would say we're probably going to end up one person short um, on that department for a significant fraction of the spring into early summer. Um,
And, and that's fine. We can do it then. Um, that's fine. Anybody else have any other questions for Eric? Related to any of the ongoing projects or completed projects and Eric, please always remember to um, you've got to let us all know the completed projects. You've got to let the public know what's getting accomplished because you know, we talk about a lot of things, but you, you and public works and uh, we have been getting things done. I think it's appropriate in these meetings that you let everyone know that these are projects that have been completed in the last month. So.
Understood, understood.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. Uh, we are going to move on to uh, old business uh, seven A, uh, the Joshua Trust discussion. So let's start there. Um, uh, John, uh, we're going to let you go. There was some information provided to us later. Um, we'll let you go and then we'll sit there and ask you questions and sit there and see what we can do.
Thank you. Um, yes, uh, this is the, I think the fifth time I've been in front of the board um, in the last six months. I'm getting to know you quite well by face anyway. Um, you'll remember that the last, at the last meeting, um, there was in a butter, um, Sheri Mashad who lives on Skinner Hill Road. She spoke earlier this evening. Um, who voiced some concerns with regard to the parking lot location on Skinner Hill Road. Um, Bill Penn and I met with her following the board meeting as you asked us to. Um, we, we had a, a good conversation with her, but what came out of us loud and clear and what you've heard a little bit earlier is that she had serious um, safety concerns living so close to the parking lot that had been proposed on Skinner Hill Road. She asked us and the, and she stated she believed Wheeling Road would be a, be a better option. We had not specifically looked at that option, partly because the um, the Joshua's Trust property does not have any frontage on Wheeling Road. That's, that's, that would be, that's completely town property um, that uh, that has the frontage on Wheeling Road. We told her we'd look at it. Um, and Bill and I went and looked at that location. And I've got to say from our perspective, it's better in every respect. And let me, let me run through that quickly. Um, and, and in no particular order, I'll just tick off the four major considerations. First, safety. Um, Skinner Hill is a busy road. I think someone in Long Hills, I think someone mentioned that earlier. Um, Wheeling Road is, it's, I don't know what the traffic numbers are, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's a tenth of the traffic that Long Hills Skinner Hill Road sees. Um, the sightlines on, on uh, Wheeling Road are excellent. On Skinner Hill Road, you're coming up over that rise and, and down the hill. Um, they leave a lot to be desired there and the, and the traffic speeds I think are probably fairly high too. Secondly, constructability. Um, many, many of Joshua's Trust properties have simple pull offs rather than full parking lots. And this uh, Wheeling Road lends itself well to this. If you look at the photos that I provided for the packet, um, I don't have a very big car, um, but you can see that I easily managed to get all four of my wheels off of the road. That's, that just would not be possible on Skinner Hill Road. So that the, the possibility of, of simple pull off parking on the side of the road is there. Um, and if there's concerns about um, the edge of the pavement, so on, that can be, we've addressed that in other towns by bringing in ass, crushed asphalt, something like that to bolster the side. So it can be constructed. If you still like the idea of the uh, the pull off parking lot, the full size parking lot, it's tailor made for it. There is an existing paved parking lot um, that serviced the house that was in that area originally. Honestly, I think with a leaf blower and a shovel, um, and about forty five minutes, we could, we could create a paved parking lot on that property for no cost at all. Um, and that is the third consideration is cost. It would be, I don't believe it would be prudent for either the town or Joshua's Trust to spend eight to sixteen thousand dollars on an engineered parking lot on Skinner Hill Road. When an option that's this much better exists right around the corner on Wheeling that also provides safety um, improvements. Finally, the fourth one is probably the hardest. Um, impact on the neighbors. Um, Joshua's Trust has trails on approximately forty properties and I would have to say on approximately forty properties at some point on the property, the trail goes within view of a house. Um, this is Connecticut. You can't put a trail in without seeing a house at some point. That's just the way it is. Um, this, this property has the advantage, the, the location that we are talking about here has the advantage that there are no immediately adjacent neighbors to the property, to the parking area that we're discussing. Um, there is a, in the packet, I've shown a picture with my car in the front and the closest house in the distance in the back around the corner. Um, that's looking one way, looking the other way. You can't see any houses for a long, long way. Um, and Jeff's correct, Jeff Murray's correct. Through the woods, you can see all the way through to the, to the other side. This time of year, you can see, you, you can see from Wheeling Road over to, is it Chad Blow Lane? Um, I don't know all the names of the roads, but you can see.
Correct you, John. In the summer, I can still see the same thing.
Okay.
See the
That's fair. I mean, it's not a, it's, it's not a half mile or anything. There's, you know.
Oh yeah, it's, this trail you're proposing is twenty five feet from the back of my property. Yes, it's, it's back to the back of my shed.
I don't think that's correct, Jeff, but what we could do, um, what I would suggest we do, I mean, we, we just think this, we think it's a better option in, in every respect. Um, Jeff, you mentioned earlier, I just want to make sure the record's correct. The um, part of this trail is on Joshua's Trust property, part of it's on the town. We have real, we have realigned the trail to, to bring it out to Wheeling Road. That change made no difference in the amount of trail that's on Joshua's Trust property. It's exactly what it was in the earlier version.
Yeah, but now John, it brings it down through the wetlands that we all walked through when we did the walkthrough.
Yeah, uh, well, let me, let me be clear on that. The the section that was on Joshua's Trust property is the same as it was before. The change now is the trail needs to get from Wheeling Road to connect to the loop that I walked with the board of selectmen. So you can see that straight section. We tried to put it right down the middle to keep it as far away from the houses as possible. This is the best, if we're gonna, if the parking is going to be on Wheeling Road, this is the best we can do. This is your property. This is town property. It's your decision. Um, if you decide that, that, that this trail is good for the residents of Andover, vote for it. Um, if you decide this is not a good idea, you don't want to see it, vote against it. We'll, we'll go build trails somewhere else. Um, but we, we think, we think this is a great thing for the residents. So we are willing to help you with this. Um, if that's what you want to do, um, the decision's yours. I, I expect we are probably, if, I guess what I'd like to do tonight, if it's possible, is either tell us you're interested in proceeding with looking at this, or tell us you'd like to end it right now. If you're pers, interested in proceeding and looking at this, what I'd like to do is meet with the board of selectmen at Wheeling Road and show them what we're talking about here so that you can see it for yourselves. Um, we also, I think it would be appropriate for us to talk to your wetland commission. Because as Jeff said, this does cross a wet area. We would have to put in, I call it a bog bridge. It's a series of four by four timbers with two by six planks across them. You've probably walked on other trails that use an approach like that. Um, we cross many, many wetlands on our properties in that manner. And I, I, I think the wetland commission would be okay with it, but we'd be happy to run it by them.
Um, uh, so let me just understand, um, Joshua's Trust is not interested in putting the parking lot in the entrance on Skinner Hill Road?
That's correct.
And so that's off the table.
It's, yes, it's off the table. And in an ideal world, we will look, we would have looked at all the options upfront. Um, but we were really focused on Skinner Hill Road because of the frontage issue.
Okay. Um, and looking at your map that you, you, where you picked your parking spot out, there's a, there's an earlier entrance, just, just so I can understand, an earlier point of access that would be available on Wheeling, you decided against that? To keep it as far away from any houses that are on Woodford. I'm just asking a question.
We were sensitive to the house that's on Wheeling, actually, when we located that lot. We tried it. We, there are two things going, two things going on there.
Murray is probably, probably right.
First thing was we're trying to
Right through my backyard. This comes right.
I, I, I get it. I'm just asking a question. I just want to know. I, I look, I look at the map and I, I look at that house and I go, it's not as close as the.
Eric, why don't you, well, please share your screen with the map if you could. So we can all This is going to be closer to my house than it was closer to Sherri's because I went and walked this property after we had this discussion with Sherri and I went to go see from my
Jeff, I, I
I know, I know what I'm saying is this word is proposed is closer to houses than it was before.
I, I understood. Just, just please.
I know, I know.
Let's let the conversation, let the conversation play out. So we all understand what we're talking about.
Okay, I think you're looking at it now.
Yeah, so, so where that, where, if you move your P up to the corner, up a little higher, just go up higher, right? Keep going, keep going, keep going, right there.
Why can't you entrance, just move the trail over there?
And move it over to that side of that area.
If it's going to be on street parking, a pull off parking, wherever the town would like to put it, whatever makes sense is fine with us.
Okay. Um, uh, I know that Jeff Murray, even before this was proposed, was very adamant as to uh, he wanted a buy in from everyone. I'm not, I'm not in favor of um, in, in, in doing these types of uh, any, anything we do in public government. I mean, you're never going to get a hundred percent buy in. I mean, I don't care where you go. There's going to be someone that's going to not want to do something. I mean, listen, we built a community center and not everyone wanted us to build the community center in the same spot. So that's life. I, I, and I don't, I'm not a believer in um, you don't have to make everybody happy. And, and we'll never make everyone happy. We're trying to make everybody happy and we're trying to do a good thing. Joshua Trust is trying to do a good thing and I greatly appreciate what they're doing. Um, so I would ask the other members of the board if they want to sit there and, and entertain Wheeling. Um, if Skinner is off the table, that's where I would have built this. I would have just built it as it was originally proposed with four parking lots, understanding that I am not going to make Sherri happy. I, and I apologize for that, but that's what I would have done. Um, so I'm going to ask the other, and, and I know Jeff Murray's answer, so we're not
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I just got this at the last minute, Jeff.
And I know, no, 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 and Jeff, Jeff, we're not even going to ask you because we understand.
And just, just to add for the record, Jeff, my neighbor Andre that lives to the north of me is also very opposed to this. And then there's also a house, if you look where the text is down there where it says GSA, there was another home right there.
Okay, and, and
There's three homes that are very close.
Jeff, I, I do understand it and I appreciate it. And, and to be really honest, um, we would know your opinion and your answer and where you would go. So I'm asking the other three members what they want to do and then we can give Joshua's Trust an answer. But so I'm going to go through each one of them.
Would you, would, would it be any better, Jeff, if you put it all the way to the northeast of the town property and started the trail in there? Well, I think at that point, we're going to impact the neighbor on the other side, the north side. Yeah, but his, his lot is pretty Yeah, but His house is pretty far away, isn't it? But the way this map is drawn, it's, it's, it looks a lot bigger than it really is because I can see my, that, that neighbor's house across the parcel. I can see the neighbor's house from my backyard. Yeah. That's how, that's how tight that area is. And I can see the cars going up and down Wheeling and you can see my house from Wheeling.
Okay.
You can distinct, you can still see your neighbor's house to the northeast, that closest one right there. And I have a shed right on the property line that's going to be within twenty five feet of this trail. And people can just freely walk up to it and, you know, it's
Okay.
Security.
All right. So, so let's, let's sit there and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do this quick, quickly. So we can all sit there and deal with it. So s, I'll, I'll start with you, Ann, because you're at the top. What would you like to do, Ann?
Um, I like the idea of it coming off of Wheeling because I think it's going to be less even less people seeing the parking area and probably fewer people just jumping on the trail. I think it'll cut down on the number of people in there. It also has, if you put it where that P is, it's already that little paved area where it had, had a house. Um, you know, myself, I drive down Wheeling once in a while, try to look through there. I cannot see houses through from Wheeling Road, except in the winter, I might be able to spot one house. And that's all. It's very hard to see through there. In the summer, I can't see more than my neighbor, immediate neighbor's house. The, the woods are so deep, so thick. Um,
And you can see my house. You can see, yeah, you can see my house.
Barely in the summer, barely.
All right. So Ann is
I am for this. My other question is, we, the original loop, there were two loops originally. We're not gonna
What are you doing?
Two loops anymore?
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm not succeeding here, hang on.
You want to answer for that one?
Yeah, I'd be interested.
What we, we eliminated that second loop again due to, uh, it was where that loop was located, came up and almost over Sheri Mashad's house. So she was concerned about people looking into her backyards. It was a legit, it was legitimate. So we, so we removed that second, um, that second loop.
So there's still a trail that does go up to um, Skinner or not?
There is, and it's important that there be a trail. Let me tell you why that is. You, you may remember. And I don't know, did we walk all the way out to Skinner Hill when we did the walk with you? Do you remember where we walked?
Forty feet or something.
We walked right up against the stone wall. So we were about a foot from Sheri Mashad's property line when we did that walk. That's the only way in there right now without getting yourself scraped up. So the, by bringing it out to Skinner Hill Road, you're actually reducing the impact on the neighbor. Because people are going to find their way in there. You know, once there's, once there's a known trail in there, people are going to find their way in there from Skinner Hill Road one way or another. Um, and we didn't want them to be going up along the stone wall next to the property line.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I'm going to ask the question that, that um, when Scott and I did it, we walked right through all of the the yeah, we walked through the brush, we walked through the, you know, I don't think we got anywhere near Sherri's house, did we Scott?
No.
No.
Well, I, I applaud you.
We didn't, we didn't walk with you, but we
Yeah. I, I applaud your, uh, your fortitude. But if you just walked over by the stone wall, you would have, you would have zipped right in without getting scraped up. So.
And why can't you just put the trail down through the pucker brush?
That's where it's going to go.
Yeah, that, that's where the trail was going. They entered in a different way than we did, Scott. We entered through the brush, through the, the garbage, through walking that way and then around. So, um, okay.
Either you can just put it away from Jerry's house and use that parking over there. There, there's gotta be a way. There's a lot of, a lot of land there.
There, there's gotta be a way, there's a lot of, a lot of land there. And I know that property really well, really well, okay? I've been in there extensively, me and Eric, me and Jeff, me and blah, 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 over the year.
It come, it, it does come down to the, to the cost and the constructibility. Why spend eight to sixteen thousand dollars on a parking lot when you've got such. An option that's got so many advantages around the corner, including cost, including safety.
Well, I, I, to be clear, um, that when this first came up. Jeff Murray was, you know, I, I'm all for the trail also, but Jeff Murray was vehemently opposed to any trail. Coming in from Wheeling Hill Road, just to put it on the record. Which Jeff, why you're also stated tonight?
And if we have a neighbor down at Skinner Hill that's against it too, maybe it's just not the best place to put this. Because we have two big parcels. We have one big parcel behind the transfer station where there's no adjoining houses to bother us. And we have a giant parcel behind the school that we have existing trails that we even have trouble getting people to maintain as it is.
Yeah, but that's the point.
Yeah, but if we have a community center in a, in a, in a focal area behind the school, should we just? Work on maintaining that network and having a good trail network back there where we don't impact anybody? Instead of trying to shoehorn something in where we're gonna impact one person on one side or somebody else on the other.
That's the.
Me in a tough places because of a selectman, it puts me in a tough spot.
Well, and you can recuse yourself, Jeff, honestly. I mean, and, and that's the truth, so, and, and I haven't sat there and pressed that because. Uh, listen, the reason to, to, and my, from my view, to sit there and, and. Continue to discuss this and to continue to try to find a solution is because. You have Joshua Trust that has a property that's willing to do the maintenance work to, to offset. The town doesn't have to do it, so if we. Find a way to do this without impacting significantly. So this is where. I look back at Skinner Hill and I go, I understand Sherry being concerned, but I also understood the other individual being. Concerned. I was willing to go forward with it at Skinner Hill. If, if Joshua's trust is not willing to go forward with it at Skinner Hill. Then we have a whole other set of issues that we have to address. And. The only way I could sit there and see it working at Wheeling, if you, you stuck to the northern side of that, that trail and. And, and made it work in that manner, because, uh. And, and I don't know if the maps are correct, but it doesn't look like that property is that close to that line. That's the only way that I would sit there and see us potentially moving forward. But Jeff, I also understand what you're saying. You also said it. You were very clear in the beginning of this process. That you did not want to sit there and see it come in from Wheeling Road. Uh, from the wetlands perspective and also for issues related to the properties that, uh, the, the homeowners that are close to, you know. It is much narrower area than what we're dealing with on the opposite side, from my perspective.
Because we have Joshua's trust and.
Yeah.
Our property together, so why, it's much wider down at that end than it is up at this end.
I don't see why, Jeff, that we can't move the trail aw, aways from Sherry's house. So there's, and put the brush between Sherry's house and. And the trail, and nobody's ever gonna even know the trails there. I don't understand why there's a issue with that house.
Yeah, um, so, um. Paula, I'm gonna have, I'm coming to you.
I'm, I'm trying to look at this from, from the resident standpoint, the people that own the houses there. I, I love the idea. I love, I love having more trails, but I think if we, I was, I was in favor of having the, um. The parking lot in the other location, not, not in Wheeling. So, I'm looking at it as, I love the idea, but I think we're. Yeah, I think we're trying to make it work and it's, it's just gonna aggravate a lot more people. And I agree with you, Jeff. You're never gonna appease everybody in the masses, but when people buy a house. In a certain area where they're thinking, you know, they have privacy and then you stir the pot with a trail, it gets people upset. So I'm trying to put myself in those people's shoes and I. I don't know that I can support it on Wheeling. And, and I wasn't with it. You know, I, I'm always trying to put myself in everybody's shoes and look at it that way, you know?
So nice, um.
Just on.
I, I, I do, I do look at property owners though, and I even look, I would tell Jeff Murray the same thing. You bought. A property that abutted, uh, uh, you know, things can happen.
But Jeff, but Jeff, to be clear, it was state property at the time.
Yeah.
And it was, and now it was turned over to the town. Now we've had a change of plans.
The state could have built a highway right behind your house, so there's, there's a lot of things that could happen and. And we all understand that when we make, we make decisions, but I, I, I'm, I'm trying to. Get to it, so one last one, Scott.
No, you already heard what I said.
I don't know.
In favor of this, I'm in favor of Skinner. I think they should move the trail.
I would vote yes. And it stays away from the neighbor's property.
Exactly, yeah. I, I was always in favor of that.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
And, and I'm in favor of the trail completely. I, I wanna use that property. Nobody's used it for anything, use it.
Yeah.
The original plan did not impact the neighbors.
We're gonna go with Ann first, Eric, and then we'll come to you.
Which side of the property and proposed trail is Sherry's house? Is it to the east or to the west? I don't know where her house is on Skinner.
It's to the east.
Hers is to the east.
Do you see where my cursor is? Oh, wait.
You're killing us, Eric.
I'm killing myself. Hang on a sec. I can show you. Am I sharing that?
No. You, you were, you were surfing the internet.
It shows right now that, alright.
Are you sharing from the right monitor?
I think so. Now it's locked down, it won't let me share at all.
What are you trying to share? Can, I guess I can't share from my side, huh?
The map, the same map that was up there, Paula.
Is it just set for the host to share, Eric? Do you know?
Yeah, hang on a second. No, it's set for multiple participants, Sherry. There you go. Got it.
Is that the map we're looking for?
No.
No.
Nope.
It's in the, it's in the regular package.
Uh, the regular package, yeah, okay.
Not of that one.
No, you're in the secondary. This is the secondary.
That's the secondary packet.
Yeah, no, I guess not.
So it's, it's not, we're not to there yet. Keep scrolling up.
Up.
Yep.
That's a new business.
It's an old business, it's an old business.
Business, so keep going up.
There's a delay, so.
Now go to the top, Paula.
Yeah, all the way to the top.
Okay, good.
Okay, so. Is the house that we're, we're concerned with, Sherry, the residence house underneath the corner of former proposed? Or the one that's on Skinner?
It's on the right edge of that box, Jeff.
Right edge of it.
Just up from the cursor.
Just up a little bit, right near the P, right there.
That's the one.
That's right in there.
And then another thing to think about with this is where that trail is now, the red trail and Sherry's house, there's a big hill there.
Yeah, to go up the hill, but.
Yeah, you would have, yeah, to get up over the top to see her house, you have to get to the top of the hill.
I mean, there's five hundred and sixty-four feet right next to it. That was on the top of that rock ridge.
Yep.
Okay, so, listen, um. We, we've kinda got our answer, really. Um, the only thing that I, I would ask Joshua Trust and I would ask. Jeff Murray is, uh. Jeff, I would like at some point in time this month, and, and I, and I do understand your issue, but I would like to go and look at Wheeling Road. With you, just to understand your concerns.
Sure.
We can sit there and do this, uh, effectively, because I, I am coming back and telling, you know, the Joshua Trust folks and John and, and, and. Uh, I, I. I still would be, I would look at, I would be on Skinner Road, because that's what we initially looked at, that's where we asked, but I will go up and look at Wheeling Road. I'll go up and look at it with Jeff Murray and, um, the rest of the board of selectmen, we can all go up and, and look at the, the different options up on Wheeling. To sit there and see if there's an opportunity for us to do this, um.
The problem in that area, Jeff, is there's all overstory. The timber in there is all canopy. And you can see from one house to the other.
Yeah, there's no brush in there.
There's pretty, there's no over, there's no understory at all in there.
Should, should we, should Scott, should we, should we be doing some logging?
It's, it's an uneven aged stand. It, it's, it should have young stuff in there. It doesn't have anything. It's all overstory. It's a bad, it's a bad, uh, forest.
Okay.
Here's the other thing, if we're changing direction. Should we be, and I'm not saying we're moving forward with this idea, but we should be, are we talking to? Residents, different ones that haven't been notified in the past? I mean, we would have to think about that as well.
Yeah, because this is a change of use. It's a change of plan.
We only have, you only have one that hasn't been communicated with before. Unless the other two on Woodfern haven't been communicated, but Jeff, that's you.
Yeah, the other, anyway, I spoke to the other neighbor next to me on Woodfern and he's against it as well.
Okay, so.
Extremely against it.
So, um.
Andre Rurek at, uh, next door in Woodfern.
I'm gonna end up in a bad position, but I, I would like to sit there and look at the Wheeling Road access, just to understand, because, uh, this was, um. I was not prepared for this level of, of information to be provided, and so, go ahead, Eric. You have your hand up.
So I just wanted to say one thing. Jeff had indicated that he was concerned that. Uh, they would be going right by his shed. Um, per the zoning regs, his shed can't be within fifty feet of the property line anyway, because that's his rear yard setback. So there should not be anybody unless they're trespassing on your property anywhere near your shed.
Well, it's closer than fifty feet, Eric, and it was there when I moved in, so.
Okay, doesn't make it legal.
Well.
And, and, and listen to me.
We're not here for that. We're not here for that.
Let, let's sit there and, and try to understand. I mean, listen, Joshua Trust has been nothing but kind to.
They have, they have, yeah.
So we have to have a little bit of respect for them and try to give them, uh, uh, an answer. The Wheeling Road access is a new, is a new component to this. We should sit there and look at it. We should sit there and make a decision, um, but, uh, I don't think we're prepared. We're not gonna give Joshua's trust a positive answer. If we vote on this today without looking at Wheeling Road.
I think we should talk about a date and time tonight, since we're all here to see.
Paula, did you see, uh, John Hankins, uh? That he, he needs to be let back into the meeting?
I let him back in.
Oh, there he is.
He should be on his way.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so, um.
Yeah, so maybe we should look at a date that all of us or most of us can get together, so that next month we. We can talk about this again with visuals.
Well, I, I think, I think what we should do is, is, is guarantee we're giving an answer next month. So it's all, it's all understand. We're gonna give Joshua's trust an answer next month. Or before next month, because I believe we're gonna end up having to have a meeting related to the, uh. The charter revision, if we all agree to, to do that. Um, we have to do that within thirty days, so. Uh, could be in, in advance of that. And what I would ask is. That we communicate outside of the meeting and set up a time where we can get up to Wheeling Road to sit there and see what we're talking about, where. Where these maps begin and end on Wheeling Road, so we understand what's up and then, um. Maybe we have a barbecue at, at Jeff's shed, uh, and, uh, understand how close, uh, this is to everything, so. All right, um, John, I apologize for not being able to give you an answer, but you need, just have to understand.
We, yeah, we play the long game.
Yes.
So that's okay.
That, that land isn't going anywhere, right, John?
Right.
Okay, I.
Well, Jeff, one more thing I wanna make clear is, I mean, before I said I would vote for this at all, I said I wanted to make sure that all the property owners were, were, were okay with the trail. Is the board taking that position, or is the board gonna make a decision if we make one property owner or two property owners upset?
Well, with the current Skinner Road proposal, there was one, there were, there are two property owners that came out negatively. For that location. One of them was appeased because John and, and Bill got out there and walked it with them and understood, they understood. Their concerns and they, they worked with it. They, they met with the other property owner, Sherry, and they, they discussed her concerns and, and. In my mind, made modifications to the, the direction of the trail, so that people were not. Uh, looking in her backyard. That's not gonna make Sherry totally comfortable. I, I, I do understand that. But this is a situation where sometimes you just have to, you gotta make a decision. If Jeff Murray, if you're not gonna vote for it for any purpose. When anyone's not happy, then I understand and respect that. That was not my original position. I, I'm looking at it going, is it in the best interest of the community? Is it an opportunity for us to make use of, of, of a, a, a natural resource that we have in our town, because we don't have a lot, but if we can make. Use of a natural resource and make, you know, as Jody Gross said, people have the ability to go out there and walk and exercise and feel good about their. Their community and their town, I'm all for it. I understand that might not be what Sherry wants to hear, but. It's not that I'm, I'm discounting what she's thinking. I'm just going, you're never gonna make everybody happy. So.
And we may not make the other landowner happy if we put the trail down by his house.
Understood.
So we have that issue too, so, I mean, Jeff, it can go back and forth, that's.
And so Jeff, just so you understand, I might vote and not make you happy, and that doesn't mean I.
That's fine.
Like you, I don't like you, it doesn't mean anything. It just means, hey, this is, this is what's right for the overall group, not just one person or another person. It's what's right for the other group. That doesn't mean I'm gonna vote for Wheeling Road. I'm just telling you that that's. My logic in how I look at this. Now, I'm kind of upset that Wheeling Road was brought up here. In that I thought we were going to vote on Skinner, on the, I mean, that's what I had envisioned. John is telling us that's not what Joshua Trust wants, so. That puts something off the table for us, really, because Joshua Trust is telling us they don't wanna do Skinner, so in my mind. The project is in jeopardy of not happening at all, but I'm willing to look at Wheeling and, and come back with everybody, and if we vote for it, we vote for it. If we don't, we don't, so.
Yeah, I just wanna bring up one more point. I remember there was probably about two or three years ago, and we had discussed with Coventry about building that. Through trail. And the board decided at that time that we were not interested in participating in that. And if we make this end to end, we're basically going against what we agreed to do back in, I think it was twenty-ten. So, that's, that's under consideration, that's under consideration too, this, this is gonna connect. Nathan Hale with, with this trail, and you're gonna get mountain bikers on it. If you open it from Wheeling, you're gonna get mountain bikers in there. Because the mountain bike trails come right up to Wheeling.
All right, so, so let's, let's, um, as a board, I, I'm just recommending that we give them an answer next month. We all sit there and look at the. Access points on Wheeling Road, and we come back prepared to provide an answer, right? So, is everybody in agreement with that? Okay, um, John and Bill, thank you very much, and, and, and listen, we, we, we're trying not to, um. Make this more difficult than it needs to be, but, um, when you have, uh, people that, uh, are buddy neighbors that, uh. Have greater concerns than somebody that lives in a different part of town, and I'm more willing to open it up, and they're more. Concerned about their individual issues, and so we're just trying to be considerate of those issues and, and, and do this in an appropriate way. So we apologize to you for not being able to give you an answer sooner, but long, long game.
Yep, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
See you, John.
Um, where are we at now? So we are still in the old business, right? Um, uh, community construction update, Eric.
Okay, so I'll give you a real brief. You probably all saw the video, um, so far. So far, the drywalling and the taping, they're on the third coat. And sanding today, they will have some touch up to do on the drywall. So we should be into painting sometime next week. The excavation contractors moved on to roughing out where these, the new septic tank is gonna be. And then the connection and the the enlargement of the beach field. And they're boxing out over that main carrying beam down the center of the basement. So that can be drywalled, or that's in the process of being drywalled now. There was a little bit of a snafu in the bathrooms. They located. Some fans in the ceiling that we had decided we're not going to be mounted in the ceiling. We're gonna be mounted in the walls. So they're gonna have to correct that, but leading edge is aware of that. So generally speaking, I think we're in pretty good shape with that project. It's moving along well. We've gotten some good feedback from the community regarding that. So I think we're in decent shape overall.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for Eric related to it? No? Okay, we're gonna move on to seven C, the discussion of the blight and level of involvement. Any updates on that area, Eric?
I really don't have any updates on that. There's no, nothing significant happened in the last month.
Okay, seven D, review of the significant taxpayer list. Everybody got that in their package?
That's in your packet on page twenty one.
Okay. Obviously, there's a very few, one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven businesses out of the top twenty. The other thirteen are residences.
Are you gonna share that, Eric?
Can if you'd like me to.
Sure, we'd love it. And so anyway, those are property owners. Eric, what I would like you to get from the town assessor is. How do rents, and and since there's only seven taxpayers that actually have.
Okay, are you seeing that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the the seven properties and and specifically. You know, not the Dollar General, but the Kingsley Drive Apartments, the Self Storage, the Extra Mart. And Andover Plaza all collect rents. How do those impact their property values? If at all, because. I mean, how many, how many units does the Washington Street self-storage unit have? And how many units does Whispering Hills have to only be valued at that amount of money? Really, doesn't necessarily sit well with me, and I'd like an understanding of that from the assessor to. You know, look at how the rents that they're collecting impact their assessed value, because Extra Mart. Charges rent to the other users of their property, Dunkin' Donuts being specifically one of them. So it's just an understand, I mean. Me as a resident, I'd like to understand that a little bit more, so.
And how can MTM Corporation, that big building, the only value, taxes are only four hundred and seventy eight dollars?
Which one?
The machine shop down on Route Six, MTM.
I don't even see that. No, that, you're you're missing that. That that biz, that building is not assessed at that. That's, that's, that is what they're saying they have in. Equipment in their building.
Oh.
Right, and the reason for that is Connecticut being a heavily democratic state. Has an enormous manufacturing incentive and tax break. So they pay very little taxes on any of their equipment in that building. And that's, that's a state law. That's not a, they should have, they own an awful lot of personal property. They just don't pay taxes.
Yeah, but that doesn't, I don't, I don't, I'm disagreeing with you because.
That shop is full of machines.
Right.
Correct. Right now, okay, let's, let's, let's go back. We're, let's talk about the top and then we'll go down to the bottom. So the top, the top is buildings, everybody. So we understand the top, the property owners is the building on the land. The bottom is equipment that is owned by those businesses and. Scott, you're right. If MTM Corporation is saying they only have seventy thousand dollars worth of equipment in the building. Forget the incentives, Eric, because what you're doing is seventy thousand times point zero three doesn't come up to four hundred and seventy eight dollars. There are credits that are being offset to let them pay four hundred and seventy eight dollars. The issue that I would have as an accountant and that Scott is asking as a, like. There's equipment in that building. It's only worth seventy thousand dollars. Are you kidding me? That's the issue. Not, not the number. They may have incentives and the state may allow them to bypass certain things. But what is in the building? No. It could be that they bought the equipment thirty years ago and it's depreciated. And as as those, those reports go down, that's fine, but. You know, just as you're doing, Eric, in our town equipment. And you're basically sitting there saying to run an effective business, you have to be able to age out your equipment and replace it. Doesn't seem like we're having an appropriate accounting of those items on certain things. So that's a question. That's just a question. I mean, because you're looking at. You know, Ron B. Son, he he does a lot of work for the community. He does a lot of good work for the community. He's saying that he has a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars worth of equipment. That's excavators, everything else. Okay, that might be right. You look down at the bottom of the list, you know. Has Seven Eleven never changed their coolers in the last ten years? They're only showing ninety nine thousand dollars of equipment. It's, that's, and and this goes.
Just assessment too. That's not the total value. That is being assessed. Even on our houses, we're not assessed a hundred percent of the value.
And and that's correct too, but it's it's different because the way those property taxes returns work. It's each year you keep a piece of equipment on there. It ages out and depreciates out, so it gets lower and lower and lower. It's a question of have they replaced things? And gotten new. And and I would tell you, most taxpayers, what they'll do is. Or just leave everything they have on there and anything new, they're not gonna put on there. And the only way that. It's caught as if the assessor and the assessor's office is going and evaluating those property tax returns. And and evaluating the information that's provided in those property tax returns. So that's a question that I'm just asking Eric to evaluate. So that we as a group can understand. What's up? Because it's a. You know, other than Connecticut Light and Power or Gunkwin Gas and Scott Electrics to to certain extent. Those are the only significant, those are the only over ten thousand dollar property taxpayers, property owners. So personal property taxpayers in our town, that's terrible. That's terrible.
Scott Electricraft has all nice new machines in there. And MTM has old. Machines, apparently.
Apparently, yeah. But those are questions for the assessor and. How we look at it, but you can easily see.
Saying is you want the assessor.
I would like an understanding. I would like him to sit there.
I'm at this meeting and because see. I mean, you're not, you're asking questions I I certainly.
No, 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 listen, don't, don't, you're a hundred percent correct. And as you know, as I've said to you. It's a. It's a very difficult. For residents and 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 even elected officials to understand exactly what occurs. Within the assessor's office and how it effectively operates. And the assessor's office is our money-making arm. There's no doubt about it. The tax collector is just a bookkeeper and collects the taxes. The assessor's office is the is the group that sits there and values the property and determines how much they should pay. What I'm driving at is out of the top twenty property. And I gotta, I gotta phrase it correctly. The top is land, the bottom is equipment. Out of the landowners in town, all the top twenty are in excess of fifteen thousand dollars. On the equipment within our town. And this goes for every business. This, I mean, this is every business that runs out of our town, every landscaper. Everything else, everything that goes on in our town, those values are really low to me. There's, there's only, there's only three of them that pay over ten thousand dollars. That's, that's. Okay, that's a, that's a, that's not a good, that's not good for the overall. You know, homeowners in this town, so. We have to look at that. That's just, this is just information for us. I mean, look at, look at Benjamin Franklin now. I I'm gonna ask the question, Eric, and and. Even I don't know this one. This has nothing to do with motor vehicles, correct? Shouldn't.
Correct. There shouldn't be motor vehicles.
Okay, next month, can you give us the top? Because there's, there's people who own multiple motor vehicles within the town. I would love to know that. Yeah, and and the other question is, you know. How many visits has the assessor's office made to these business owners? And I would like to know that because we really don't know. And the assessor's office makes us the money. You all, we all need to understand that. The assessor's office makes the community money. To be able to pay for all the functions, school, roads, everything. And it would be helpful if we could understand a little bit more of what they do within that office, so.
How can a cell tower be worth hundred thousand dollars?
How could it be?
How how could it possibly be worth less than a million dollars?
It's a question. You know, how much did it cost to build? I mean. The assessor's office, or thi- this goes in, this goes into our, our, our. You know, these are all supposed to interact. Everything's supposed to interact. I mean. That cell tower was built and a building permit was given to it. It was applied for and given to. We should know how much money that costs to build. Did they give us the right information is a different question. Did we care that they gave us the right information or didn't care that they give us the right information? This, this, this. Exercise to me, as an accountant and as a business owner, is the most important exercise we can go through. Because it's the only way we understand how our community makes money. Now, it might not be the right way to make money. I'm I'm not gonna debate that. I, but it's the only thing we're given right now, so.
Cause every time somebody, every time somebody hangs something from that tower, it's worth more money, right?
It should be, yeah.
Yeah, so how can it, how can it be worth a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so those are things that we need to, I I mean, really, you ask me, you know. The assessor's office is a very challenging office to evaluate. No one can sit there and say that because you don't sit there and evaluate the assessor's office as a group. You you evaluate the assessor's office on your own residence or your own personal property tax return. So we as a board need to think about this a little bit differently. And that's why I was glad that when Eric shared this originally. Or maybe I asked for it. I might have asked for it. I think Eric gave us some information and then I asked for a little bit more information. I think it's probably pretty good for us in the future to understand this, and it'll be, it'd be positive for the community to understand this. Because of, this is, this is how we make money and you can just flat out tell all the money is made from personal residences. Because if there's six businesses here. I'd like to know how many total businesses are on the property owner list. I mean, in total. And. Yeah, and then, and then I look at this personal property stuff and I'm like, that's kind of low. I mean, that's kind of low. So. Anyway, I don't have enough information. I I just, this is out there for. People to understand and look at and and try to get a, an understanding. So T-Mobile Northeast, like Scott says, only pays. Six thousand dollars in personal property taxes, AT&amp;T Mobility, six thousand dollars in personal property taxes. And how much money are they making transmitting those signals across the town of Andover?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any other issues they wanted to address related to this today? Eric, what I would ask you for is next month, if you can keep the same report and then put on top of it, I'd like to know. The taxpayers who pay the most motor vehicle taxes in town. So I'd like the other component, because this is, this is only two of the three components of taxes for the community. The other is motor vehicles. And then there's the supplemental. Motor vehicle, but motor vehicle is the next one, so. And then we'll sit there and evaluate what we're doing and we're we're definitely going to have to have the assessor come and talk to us. Right?
I mean, it sounds like you're gonna want the assessor and you would need the. It, cause it's not vision appraisal that does the commercial appraisal. For town, you would need the the town's commercial appraiser probably to answer those questions, I'm guessing.
You can ask that question. I don't necessarily know there's a commercial appraiser. I think what occurs, Eric, is. Business owners. Are required to file a property tax return.
Right.
Property tax return gets submitted to the assessor's office, and the assessor's office usually just takes the data that's provided. The question that we would want to ask is, how many of those returns are audited or evaluated? And how many visits are made by the assessor to get out to these property owners to determine if they've even reported. The appropriate information.
Yes, I'm talking about the property evaluation. That is, the town very definitely hires its own commercial appraiser to appraise those property, or not appraiser, but.
Correct, and and I'm not really, I mean, listen, I'll question the residential property taxes. Don't get me wrong, I'm on the list. But that's not why I'm doing this. My question to you earlier on the property owners. And 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 the assessor can give us how it's done so we can understand it better. And maybe ask some pointed questions as to how we're doing it and not doing it. And and are we doing it effectively or not? My question was. Of the six businesses that are on the property owner's list. Four of them or five of them collect rent. And what I was after is how is the rent evaluated into the whole property value? You know, because I look at those apartments and go, hmm, there there's probably thirty or forty units over there, correct? Scott, you would know better than I would.
It could be.
Yeah, so. That's, even if they're paying a thousand dollars a month, that's forty thousand dollars in rent. And they're not paying a thousand dollars a month. They're paying fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month. Let's say two thousand dollars a month. That's eighty thousand a month in rent. And I I realize there's expenses to it. I'm not going that way. I'm just asking, does the eighty thousand dollars in rent? That is being generated impact the property and the assessment value for that property? And that's it. And and all I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to haul any of these property taxpayers out or these taxpayers out. I'm just trying to understand how it works. Because if we are doing our job, which we haven't done, I haven't done, I'll take responsibility, I haven't done. This is where the money's made. Th- this is how you run your business. And you know, this is the business of a small town. And we have an issue in that the balance of the the revenue generated is generated off of personal residences, and that's fine. But it would be nice to understand exactly how that department runs it and does it because. That's the most, that's where all the money is. So let's try to get an understanding of how it's made and then we can do a better job of doing the rest of it. Because if we'd like to do other things, we might have to generate some more money. So if things are not being done correctly on here, maybe it's, maybe it's us as a board calling it out of from that department. So that we get and generate additional money. Anybody else have anything related to this? No? Okay.
I looked at this and saw how much the. New Dollar General brought in. Goes to show you how we need new businesses.
Yeah, it would be, and and maybe that's also something, and that we sit there as a board and try to figure out ways to. Assist to generate more money, because more businesses need more money. More money means taxes. And more taxes might be able to allow us to do different things, or may be able to allow us to reduce the burden on the personal homeowners.
Right.
Right. Okay. A discussion of extensive tree trimming, Burnett Brook, seven E. Anything, Eric?
You ready?
No, you're gonna go, Scott?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, so me and Jay went over there and went over the road. And if anybody had been on that road before, you can tell that. It's a very tight road. The trees are growing almost up to the asphalt in many, many locations. You know, it was a dirt road when I was a kid, that they tarred it and the trees are still there growing. Um, so a lot of the big trees along the side on the towns right away need to be cut down. And there, it, it's, it's, it's very extensive. Um, there's a lot of trees that are growing completely over the road from one side to the other. There, there's a lot of small trees that are grown that, in there right away also that need to be trimmed out of there now. There's a lot of dead trees. The, the, the trees are so close to the side of the road in some areas that a plow is possibly in a big snowstorm. If you lost your sight or something, you could easily hit the trees, some of those huge trees that have known in there. So, uh, it's gonna be a big, big change on that road. So the public needs to know that it's gonna be a big change, but it's for the good of the road, actually, and for, you know, safety.
This, so I understand this. What, Eric, when is this potentially gonna start?
There's no time schedule yet because it has to be, has to be talked about a little bit. It has to be. They're trying to get every source to do, you know, a split with us again. Half and half, they, they do pay for half of it and we pay for half of it. There's a lot of legwork to be done forward. Listen, we're not marking any trees yet. So i- it is, it is pretty bad up there.
Eric, probably goes into next budget season.
Okay, so, so it, it's, it's a problematic road. We've got to try to fix it, but we're not, we're not there yet. It's not like you're starting this within the next couple of months.
No, the, the reason Jay wanted the Board of Selectmen to understand and be on board with this. Is because what he's proposing is trimming extensively enough that it will change the character of the road. Um, and, you know, that's what he thinks we should do. But he also wants you all to understand that that's what he's proposing. Cause ultimately you're the ones that are gonna get the plates from residents, um, you know, if we do this potentially.
Okay, so it's, it's complaints from residents about trees or complaints from residents about the road? So we're just making an evaluation?
Both.
Okay, alright.
Start to, start the subject, start the conversation.
Okay, um. Uh, Paula, is it possible to put something up on Facebook to sit there and see, uh, the pushback and say, hey, listen. We're, we're, we're anticipating a significant level of tree trimming to be done on Burnet Brook. This is the reason why we're doing it, because the, the trees are too close to the road, they're impacting the, the, the roads. And this is a plan to happen over the next 18 to 24 months. Is there any real feedback that can come back to us? So, that possible?
Um, I think the best way to do it is to set up a, an email that people could. Because if you put a post out there, people are gonna comment and then somebody has to take all those comments and bring it somewhere else. So either we do it that way or you put in the post. A link to like a Google form or something and they can, they can fill that out and it dumps into an email somewhere that Eric can read and compile.
Okay, um, it's not that important that we do that immediately. Let's think about the easiest possible solution to make this as efficient as we can. And, but to get some feedback and, and at least we're starting the ball rolling to say, hey, listen, this is coming down the road. We're going to do this. What level we do this at will be dependent upon certain factors, but we want your input, um, so.
Yeah, so we can, I mean, I don't know if you want it in a survey fashion, but we can put a survey out there. Or we can do like a form where they fill out their concerns and then we take that and, and it dumped somewhere where we can look at it.
I, I, I don't, I don't think you really should approach it that way. I think that, then it has. No, you know.
I mean, I can't believe there's that many residents on that road.
There, there, I think that all of them would probably be happy if those trees were gone myself.
I mean, maybe, maybe we do what we're doing for the, uh, uh, the Joshua Trust property. As we evaluate the, the abut, the abutting residents on the road and we tell them what we're planning, our plan is.
Now, why can't we send a letter and say, if you have questions or concerns? I, I think that's the better route. Because if you, if you put it out there on Facebook, then people who it doesn't affect are gonna comment. And it's just gonna bog, it's gonna muddy the message.
Okay, so then, but, let's try to do it that way. Let's, let's, so Eric, what we're gonna do is try to get letters out to the people that are. On Skinner Road initially and, uh.
Burnet Brook.
I'm sorry.
Used to be called Skinner Road. The old Skinner Road.
The old Skinner Road, I apologize. Okay, anything else related to that topic, Scott?
Do you really wanna set the precedent that every time you're doing free work on a road? You're gonna do that because the next time you cut on Gilead. You know, people are gonna come back to you and say, well, you pulled everybody here, how come you didn't pull us?
Well, I don't necessarily know. I want you to pull them. I want you to tell them it's our plan to do roadwork.
Uh, that's what, that would be a better message.
It's, it's our plan to do.
Better message.
Please let us know, um.
Eric's right about that.
Concerns, if you.
It has to be done.
Here's what's gonna happen. It's got to get done and, and they'll probably, uh, not respond to the letter. But our plan is to do roadwork and extensive tree work on this road. It will occur within the next, you know, 18 months. Uh, we're just letting you know that. You have any issues related to this, let us know.
During, it's in the towns right away, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Again, this is one of those issues that's just like what we talked about with Joshua's trust. You will never make everybody happy, but you gotta make decisions, so.
It's, it's better to give them a long.
It's gonna get done.
Why didn't you notify everyone when you did this trail on Skinner Road?
Sherry, Sherry, I, I appreciate, but you can't, you can't speak during meetings. You have to wait till public speak. I greatly understand, but please don't do that. So, um, it's the issue that we know you're gonna end up getting stuff done, so we're gonna do it. But we're trying to be considerate of other people's feelings and other people's issues, so. Okay, so we're now moving on to F, a ride for CCAP. Eric, anything on this?
Uh, you asked it to go back to the board because the poll board had not approved.
I was presented with, uh, uh, an event permit I needed to sign. Eric, please explain, explain this raise so that I can get the board's approval to sign that.
It's a fundraiser they do every year. They use town streets. They ride on it. That I have the authority to sign for, but they also requested to use the old firehouse. Uh, to put a porta potty on and have essentially a restation for the ride. So it did go to all the appropriate, it did eventually get signed off by. Fire marshal, et cetera. So that has occurred. Now it comes back to the.
So the question ends up being to the board is, and I'll make a motion that, um, I'm, I can sign this event permit. But I needed to get it in front of the board, so I'll make a motion that I, I'm, I'm able to sign the ride for CCC, CCAP event permit.
I'll second that.
Right, does anybody have any questions about the event or anything?
No.
We're just curious, what does that mean? CCAP?
Connecticut Children's Cycling Advancement Program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five, nothing. Alright, let's go on to new business and we're, we're going pretty slow, um. Uh, set meeting date for the annual town budget meeting. The proposal is May 1st. I'll make a motion that we set a meeting, a town, annual town budget meeting for May 1st, 2024. Someone got a second then?
I'll second it.
Maybe, yeah, May 1st, sir.
Okay, that's, correct.
Let's just look at May 1st on the calendar so we know what we're doing.
I was against.
And, um, is there any, is there anything else going on that night town-wise? Do we check the calendar?
Eric, are you good with the calendar?
I can look at the calendar, but, you know, it's irrelevant. The town meeting trumps everything anyway. We're not gonna schedule a town meeting around other things, other things scheduled around the town.
I don't see anything on the calendar, so there's that.
Okay, thank you, Paula. All those in favor? Aye. Alright, Jeff Murray, are you good? Right? Jeff Murray abstained, so.
No, I was a yes.
You're a yes, okay, you were muted. Alright, um, uh. Eight B, set a date for a town meeting to discuss a proposed. Um, excuse me, to discuss the boundary line agreement for the King family, boundary line agreement with the Hawes family, the acceptance of the steep grant. Uh, with town match for the, uh, playgrounds and pickleball courts. Purchase and lease of a roadside motor. Uh, zoning violation, fine ordinance, failure to get a permit post a bond for work in the town right away. Uh, fine ordinance and an ornament, ordinance for commission on agent. The, uh, potential dates, uh, proposed dates are Tuesday, April 23rd or Monday, April 29th. I have to get an answer on that one. I'm thinking that 23rd might be the best day for me, but I guess that doesn't really matter.
Can you see those dates again, please?
May 29th.
April 23rd or April 29th.
And this is for another, is this for a town meeting as well? Or what is this for again? So, town meeting?
Yeah, this is a town meeting to vote on all of those items that I just read and that are on the agenda.
And this can't be combined with the May 1st one?
No.
I wonder if you'll get a better turnout if you do it on the 29th. I don't, I don't know, just thinking. People are gonna come out on the 23rd and then a week later, just thinking out loud here.
I think that's better than the 29th.
You do? Yeah, you think if they're closer.
Be two, just two days apart.
Oh, I thought it, sorry, I thought it was, I thought it was May, May 29th, but my internet keeps, so it's, uh, April 23rd and April 29th?
Hold on for one second, I have to, I have to mute myself and.
I mean, from my perspective, the 23rd is ideal because that gives the Board of Finance. Um, because some of the decisions that are made will impact the budget. And the budget meeting, the Board of Finance Public Budget Meeting is on the 24th. So that would make those decisions made before they actually have their public meeting.
I'm gonna make a recommendation is that, let's, um, this, this is just me, put the, the mower. Oh, man, that's a. So Eric, you're concerned about the mower and the, the steep grant? Related to the budget, this current budget?
Um, the mower is the only thing that has a major impact on the budget. But remember, every one of these meetings costs us money. That's why we've been pushing it off. Because you wanted everything to go at once.
Uh, understood and, um. I, I'm gonna recommend that we put the purchase of, and the lease of the roadside mower on the town meeting, but the budget meeting. Can we do that, just that one item and put that in the front of this, this whole thing? I mean, and then I'm, I'm.
Question, uh, to be honest, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that we. I don't know.
Got a Dennis question? Cause he's on, he's on.
Dennis, Dennis, if we put a question, can we put a question at the beginning of the budget meeting? Cause it is a town meeting. Can we put a question at the beginning of the meeting? You're muted. You gotta unmute yourself. Can anybody unmute him or he has to do it on his phone? What's the, what is it, star?
I think it's star, star eight. He, he knows, he might, maybe he's stepped away from his desk.
Okay. I, I think the meeting on the 23rd or the 29th to do this, to do all the other items is probably a little too tight, Eric. Dennis, are you with us? No, okay, so, um. I'm gonna suggest we push that, but the only problem is we push it into May, we're pushing it into issues related to. If the budget doesn't pass, what are we doing then? And then we got referendums and everything else. I'm not sure that, that we'll be ready for that meeting in two weeks. That would be my concern and my concern for, for Attorney O'Brien. Because there's a lot of issues here that he, he's worked on, but he has to finalize before then. So I would sit there and recommend that we push that off and we, we do this, that meeting, the town meeting in June. But we have to do the mower before the budget. Because it impacts the budget, correct?
It does impact the budget.
I think that's a good way of looking at it, yeah.
But I don't think that, I don't think it can be done at the same time as the annual budget meeting, but. I'm not, that's not my area of expertise.
Okay, Dennis, if you're listening to us, can you text me if that's possible? If you can't do it. Cause he's still muted. Uh, he's saying we cannot do that. Thanks, that wasn't the answer that I wanted. Dennis, you were supposed to say, yes, you can, and we'd sit there and try to be as efficient as we possibly can be.
Yes, you can't to what? What you questioned or what?
Just, I just wanted, we could have, uh, so Eric, is there any way that we can position that as part of the budget, the roadside mower? It is part of the budget, but what are we asking? What, just so we're all clear, because I think I have it in my head, but I wanna understand exactly what we're asking for. We're asking for the ability to. Put a lease together for the current budget, for the current budget cycle and pay the first lease payment, right?
Correct. To, to basically, we're asking to agree to lease this vehicle now. And sign the contract now so we can get an existing one that's built, um, that's cheaper than waiting. You know, for the build time and getting one eight months from now.
So a decision that this board should be able to make in two seconds, we have to go to town meeting for, to sit there and get it approved. Okay.
Yes.
Very poor.
That's the charter.
Yeah.
Okay. That should be the only, I mean, that's gonna be the only part, the only item on this time. And I'd like, look, why are we having a town meeting to do that? Let's just do it as part of the budget item. Let's put it in the beginning. Let's have people vote on it. We'll have them.
You don't wanna buy it this year, you wanna buy it next year?
No, 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 I wanna buy it this year. I wanna put the question on the budget meeting. Uh, actually, this is how I wanna do it. I wanna have two town meetings back to back. I wanna have the first town meeting. Um, and I want to have it just be the mower. And we vote on it before the, the, the budget meeting, and then we have the budget meeting same day, same time, same group of people. Dennis, can that be happened? Can you pull that off? Text me that one. You may be able to pull it off. Okay. Yes, do two time meetings is good. Okay, Eric, we're doing two town meetings back to back. The first one is on the mower, the second one is on the budget. You're gonna do it on May first.
Okay, so none of those other things you want to bring up?
Uh, we're going to have to schedule another town meeting because I, 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 we're gonna have to do that separately, to sit there and push it after the budget cycle. So sometime in June, I would guess would be the best part, the best thing to do related to that. Okay, apologize for that, but I think we're probably, that will probably work. Um, I'm, I'm gonna ask if someone can mute individuals on the meeting? Are we all set, Eric?
As far as I know.
All right, thank you. Um. Okay, so, um, yes, so Eric, we're gonna schedule that meeting. We're gonna get Dennis, uh, enough time to sit there and do it, and we're gonna do it after the budget is passed. Okay, and we're gonna get it done quickly, Eric. We're not gonna make you wait too much longer. Okay, um, anybody else have any issues related to the town meeting? Anybody have any issues pushing it back? Anybody have any issues of doing two town meetings all at one time? Okay.
My question with that is, can they, do they have to have the budget presentation ready? Depending on that vote, is it that gonna change how they have the budget to present to the townspeople? I mean, if they, they know, then the budget changes from what it would be, yeah. Is that a big difference?
It's one line, right, Eric?
I, I mean, yeah, will have some impact on the budget. Um, I haven't really thought that through, cause I was not anticipating that being aligned where we were going with it, so. Uh, that's a board of finance question. The board of finance was the one was pushing us to have the town meeting, get those decisions made sooner rather than later, but if we don't, we don't.
But the question is, is there the possibility that the presentation can be changed or modified if there's a yes vote or a no vote? Like, that's my question. And how different is that?
That's probably a Mark Brinker question, not an Eric question, cause that's his, you know. His at that point.
All right, Joanne Ebert has her hand up, and so she's the representative from the Board of Finance. Go ahead. Give us an answer, Joanne.
Thank you. Just real quick, it is gonna be disappointing because we had been waiting for a town meeting. I understand you don't wanna spend the money to have the two back to back. We had been hoping, I know there was issues with, I know the whole list that, uh, um, Eric had brought forward with some other things, um. Yeah, so it's just overall disappointing because we keep waiting.
I'm not, I'm not worried about disappointing, Joanne. What I'm asking is, can it be done or not? That's all we're asking.
Well, it, it, of, so, hearing that there's not even gonna be a meeting and it's, and no one's remembering why we wanted to do this. You know, it was gonna affect how we put the budget together. We have two big weeks coming up, so, um, yeah, we'll just have to go with it. I mean, I do go to all the meetings and I get the input from how you all feel, but I am so disappointed and even, but, but that's not even, that we can't do our jobs in the right way. Because this has been pushed off month after month after month, but that's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna hang in there. Yes, I'm sure it's gonna be difficult for Mark to put the budget document together, because you're having a back to back meeting that night. I'm, I'm just frustrated and you asked the question, so we'll do whatever you guys want us to do. We always will, but we wanted the town input on all these important items.
Okay, thank you.
How much, okay, how much is it to do another meeting? Let's just talk about the number real quick. I just wanna know. Do we know, Eric?
Um, it's probably fifteen hundred bucks. It's not a lot more than that. It's not a giant, uh, you know, a giant expense.
Well, what's our gamble as a group? Our gamble is that it gets rejected? That's the gamble.
Well, do you know the town is gonna back you on the steep grant? Cause we have a committee spinning their heels working on this when we don't even know whether the town's gonna accept it. Will they? More than likely. Um, it's a great proposal. It should be accepted. Um, that's one, you know, I don't think. I mean, we're pushing it, we're already pushing it pretty dramatically, whether we get the mower or not, because, you know, at some point, somebody else is gonna buy the damn thing out from under us. I mean, the only thing that saves us is most other towns won't have the money until the new fiscal year either.
All right, so let, let, let's ask the question then. Do you have the boundary line agreement with the King family done? Is it ready to go?
That's a Dennis question. He's had all the information.
All right.
I've got the documentation, the mets and bounds and the mapping. That's in your pack.
Okay, and the, and the, the, so Dennis, and he can't talk, he can't get his computer to work or his phone to work, um. It's two weeks, it's two weeks, it's two weeks for our town attorney to do all that work.
Then we can't do it. It's not simple.
All right, but that, but that doesn't mean, but that doesn't mean we can't do the two things that you want to really get done, which, which would mean we just have to have a different town meeting. So, can we have a town meeting on the mower and on the steep grant?
Sure. Yep.
All right. The twenty third is the, the only day that I can't make the other day, so if we did it, we would do it the twenty third. But if, if you want me there, if you don't want me there, it's okay too, because it's only two questions, but, um. If we're gonna do that and have the meeting before the, the budget meeting, it's, the twenty third would be the day I would ask everybody to consider.
Let's do it.
All right, so, anybody have any problems with the twenty third? Just, we'll just go? No?
All right.
So I'm gonna make a motion.
Don't base it on me, but I'm, I'm a possibility that I might not be there that night, so. But the majority rules, so.
All right, um, so.
We, we don't need the full board anyway, right?
We don't, but.
Yeah, it's just apologies, yeah, just.
Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we set a town, um, a town meeting for Tuesday, April twenty third to discuss the purchase and lease of, uh, a roadside mower and the acceptance of the steep grant, uh, for the, uh, town, uh, recreation area for the playground and the pickleball courts.
I'll second.
All right, uh, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, and then, uh, just to sit there and, and the, the other items, we're going to have to sit there and, and, and schedule that meeting when Dennis, uh, O'Brien gives us, uh, a date and a timeline that he can complete all of the other items so that we can, we can do it all at one time. All right, um, eight C, uh, the e-bike loner program, Eric.
Derek, Dennis was calling me.
His phone. He can call you. Dennis, you're done, sorry. Uh, Eric, e-loner, e-bike, e-bike.
Yep, so I submitted the grant, but we obviously don't have to, to accept it, even if we get it. Um, what are your questions relative to that? I gave you the basic outline of the details. I asked Kerma, uh, for an evaluation of that. Um, they will get back to me eventually, um, probably not in the next month. But, I mean, eventually we'll get something back from Kerma.
Okay, um, I don't have any issues. I think it's great that you applied for the grant. Well, let's see if we get it. If we get it, then we can sit there and make some decisions. Anybody else have any other issues? Okay.
Um, there's a lot of issues that go along with it, though, right? But we're gonna discuss them, right? Once, if the grants approved, we're not, just cause the grants approved, we're not gonna move ahead with it, is correct?
Correct.
We don't, cause there is a lot of liability issues and uses issues that we really need to iron out.
Okay.
And who's gonna run the program? Who's gonna maintain the bikes?
Who's gonna maintain the bikes?
Bro back in.
All good, all good things that we should have on the agenda, and hopefully if the budget passes and we have a person at the community center running those things, they can be part of that program. That's how I would look at it. But we don't have to accept the grant if we get it. We should accept the grant if we get it, and we should figure out how to do it. But those are all issues that we can work on.
It sounds like an excellent thing.
Okay. Uh, eight D, uh, charter revision, uh, panel discussion. Um, actually, uh, I, I asked Eric to put this on the agenda. I want to sit there and, uh, empower another charter revision group, um. All we need to do today is, is agree to do it, because what I would like to do is get everybody's opinions on what we need to revise in the charter, because coming to a, uh, presidential election, there'll be a tremendous turnout. And if we're gonna do charter revision, we should always do it on a presidential election vote, and so that, that is what I'm after, so, um, and with a certain timing, uh, I have some available free time and my goal is to sit there and, uh, work on that, so.
All right, so you need a motion for that, Jeff?
Yeah, I just need a motion to, um, uh, I, and I'll make it, uh, Dennis, I, and oh my god, technology.
I finally got, I finally got in with your cockamamie system, but, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit upset about this town meeting thing. Uh, all the ordinances that I've done, they're all done. Okay, I, I've done like tons of them. I sent them to Eric. Some of them are on the agenda, some of them are not, but those are all done and ready to go. I could go with those tomorrow. The only thing I haven't done is I haven't created the documents for the, um, the King property. I need Eric to help me with that, but I can do that.
And, and.
Okay, so, oh. All that stuff should.
Okay, that's fine, but we're gonna have to do it. We're gonna, Dennis, we're gonna have to do another town meeting anyway.
All right, all right. I just don't wanna wait forever on all these ordinances. I spent a lot of time going over all those.
We're gonna, we're going to get them all done. We're going to get them all done. It's not that we're not gonna have a second meeting, it's just that if we don't do a meeting by the twenty, so if you're telling me you don't have the King document done, and you won't have that, no, no, listen, listen, you don't have that done by the twenty third.
I will, I will get it done. I will, I, I will do whatever I need to do. That's, that's what I do. Okay, but I need Eric, I need to sit down with Eric to help me. Okay? All right, Eric?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So, so now Dennis, so Dennis, you sat there and said you. No, listen, 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 my friend, I've got to. One second, I gotta go backwards. If you're, if you're telling, you send me a text, you sent me a text saying that you could not do the twenty third, it's too soon. And now you're speaking to us, speaking to us, and you're telling us you can do it. Can you do it?
Yes, I, I.
Okay.
I said I couldn't do it, cause I have a conflict, that's it, but I will be there.
I, I, I'm sorry. I'm, okay, listen, Dennis, I'm gonna revise my motion for town meeting.
All right.
If, if, if nobody on the board, the selectman has a problem now that we can hear from the town attorney. I'm gonna sit there and go, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize, uh, or we, we set a, a date, a meeting date for a town meeting of April twenty third to, uh, uh, to bring to town meeting, uh, a boundary line agreement with the King family, a boundary line agreement with the Hawes family, acceptance of the steep grant, uh, between the state and the town for the recreational field, uh, playground and pickleball courts. Um, purchase and lease of a roadside motor for the Department of Public Works, a zoning violation ordinance, um, a failure to get a permit and post a bond for work in the town right away, and an ordinance for, uh, the commission on aging.
Yeah, that's good, uh, I have.
Dennis, Dennis.
I'll second that, Jeff.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Sorry.
Any further?
Sorry, I apologize.
Mute yourself. Any further, any further discussion?
I'll never get back in.
All right, uh, uh, all in favor, aye. So we're moving forward with a town meeting to do all of the items that have been listed on the agenda, and it's gonna be scheduled for April twenty third, seven P M, uh, at the community room, Eric, or at the, at the gym, at the community room?
I think this is a, that's not gonna be big enough. We can do that in the community.
All right, community room, okay. All right, um, Dennis, thank you very much. We do appreciate all your efforts, um.
You're welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm glad I was able to get in.
There you go.
All right, on the charter revision.
Yes, sir.
You just need a motion to create a commission.
Okay.
That, that's, that's all you need to do tonight, but you're gonna have to somehow, uh, impan, uh, appoint the commission within thirty days.
Okay, so.
And that doesn't fall within your next meeting, uh, regular meeting is the fourteenth of, uh, May, and that's outside of thirty days, so you're gonna have to have a special meeting.
Okay, um, so, um.
We can work on that.
I'll make a motion that we impanel a charter revision commission, committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, further discussion on a charter revision commission. Anybody?
You're gonna be the chairman?
Uh, I will be the representative from the Board of Selectmen if I'm a paneled at our next meeting.
Yeah, I think the chairman has to be voted on, right?
The chairman has to be voted on, yes. No, not, no, 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 not, not the chairman of, um, I won't, the, the, the committee, uh, elects the chairman. Uh, our board im panels the, the participants in the charter revision committee, and that would happen at the next meeting. I am telling you that I will sit there and do that, and I would like to do that, but you, the members, all need to vote on that. Right, because there's rules within our charter that only one elected official per five members, two elected officials if we extend the panel to seven. Uh, uh, but what we need to do is if we vote on this and we agree to do it, we gotta advertise it, and then we gotta get people to sit there and come and put their names in and saying that they'll sit there and do it, and then we have to have five members that will impanel themselves at a minimum, and then if we get more, we can impanel seven, um, but yes.
Very good.
All we need to do is, they will, we'll do it. Go ahead, Dennis.
I just wanna say that, if, if, you know, you, you're on it, if you wanna get it on the ballot for November, you have to have it into the Secretary of State's office by early September. So you're gonna be, you don't have a lot of time. So I recommend that you appoint a, the smallest number of commission members that you can do, and that's five. And if you have five, it's state law, not our charter, that says only one can be a public, a current public official. And if that happens to be our first selectman, so be it. But that's, that, that's all I need to tell you now. I could give you an hour long presentation right now. I am all geared up. I'm ready to talk.
No, we're good.
All, all right, I'll shut up.
Okay, um, so, um, we, we have, um, we have the motion in front of us. I just want to, um, any other questions? Any other issues? Anything? No?
I just, my questions are simply logistics. Um, so you want to advertise in the paper, advertise on social media? When do you want responses back from members at large? Or are you just gonna pick members at large? How do you wanna?
April, it by, by, uh, April twenty first, because my thought is that we, uh, we have a, a, a special meeting on April twenty third, if at all possible, and, and vote in and panel the members, because if not, we're gonna have to have a special meeting, because what Dennis is saying is it's thirty days. And today. And today is the uh, eleventh, and our next meeting is not till the fourteenth. So we'd have to have some special, some type of special meeting to sit there and do this. Now, we can do this May first, if everybody's willing to just. You know, get on a Zoom call for two minutes to do this, um, or we could try to do the twenty third. What's everyone's opinion?
You can meet a half an hour before the town meeting. And just knock out a special meeting with one single agenda item.
That's what I was thinking, but I'm not sure that gives the community enough time to to put their names in that to want to do this.
Pretty tight.
First.
I mean, for May first?
Yeah, let's do it May first. I mean, we have up until the tenth of May. We can do, we can do, we can do, uh, we want, um, Eric Logistics, we want everybody to, uh. Who wants to participate to have uh, a letter of those of, um. Someone help me with that, it's a.
It's a letter of intent.
Letter of intent for May first, and then let's have a meeting on May eighth, very quickly to sit there and, you know. Fifteen minutes to impanel the group. So by May first, you send all of the people who want to participate. To to the board, and then on May eighth, we sit there and have a meeting. It will fall within the thirty days, and then we can get started and we can, um. All come at the next meeting, and everybody can sit there and and give their opinion from the board perspective. As to what items within the charter need to be revised so that we can have a cohesive. Analysis of the charter and try to sit there and and get something passed, uh. In November. So, we haven't voted, so. Um, those are the logistics that I think would work the best if everybody can sit there and do it. So. All those in favor of impaneling a charter revision committee?
Aye.
Okay, okay, all right.
Everybody needs to read the charter quick.
Yeah, um, so I think that's everything from new business. So, uh, item nine, approval of minute meetings for, uh, March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye, all right. The Treasurer's Report, Eric, are there any items that you want to address within the Treasurer's Report or anything that you need to call out to us?
Nope.
Anybody have any questions related to the Treasurer's Report? Okay, um, Tax Collector's Report. And there's some refund requests. Is that accurate, Eric?
Yeah, it looks like there's only one refund request for sixty six dollars and forty cents.
Let's sit there and get to it.
Uh, that is page sixty one of the packet.
Okay, thank you. I'll I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve a refund of excess payments for a resident for, uh. Lauren M. Carrera for sixty six dollars and forty cents.
I'll second.
All right, uh, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. I'm assuming that was five to nothing. I didn't sit there and see anything, um. We're moving on to. Uh, the departmental reports. Does anybody have any questions on any of the departmental reports that were provided? Item twelve on our agenda? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item thirteen. Eric, is there any correspondence?
Uh, no.
Okay, and we're going to move on to item fourteen, public speak. Uh, so Eric, please make sure that people are on, not unmuted from our end. All right, uh, I'm going to start with Bill Penn, Bill.
I'm, I'm good, thank you. I appreciate, uh, all the work you guys do and all your discussions and everything. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jody Gross.
I'm, uh, I'm good as well. I just, I'll I'll echo what Bill said, um, as a board, you're appreciated. Um, from the town residents, the level of rigor and inclusive approach you guys are taking is fantastic. And then, um, our town manager there, just Eric, uh, wonderful. I, you know, I remember our town, our town manager, and it stunk. So having you sort of. Project manage, lead, all that stuff. It it's appreciated by the residents. Um, and then lastly, I'll, you know, I'll I'll just say, I know that there'll never be a hundred percent agreement on issues. Um, so, you know, as you think about something like the Skinner Hill. Um, I I guess I would encourage you to continue to drive for a solution. Um, you know, that that'll have the least impact, and think honestly about the most residents in town. Not just the the few that might be, might be loud. Um, but again, you're all appreciated. Thanks.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, Sherry.
I would like everybody to think about how this would be violating me as a person. And as the only safety I have. Right now. And I am one person, but if you don't look behind the story of the people. And what's really going on, is it really impacting other people more than me? I don't think that you're looking at all. The points. That make it significant. And it's the ignorance of the community, and they're not trauma informed. And it's sad, so I'm not mad at you. I just don't think you understand, and I have an extensive trauma history. And you're not validating, because I didn't tell you, but you, but you you think that it's okay if I don't like it or not. I don't even open my curtains right now, and you haven't taken into consideration. That you didn't notify anyone that they're going to be walking through the woods in our, in our area, next to my property. And you think that it it it's making me feel safe, because you you don't think that it's, that I'm significant to be conformed. That somebody's going to be walking around my property? And that had a lot to do with how much more significant the the reaction was for me. So I think that as a board, and the town manager should think about not only where people live. But where they're at. And is it really impacting someone? Less or more than the others? And I live alone, and I'm a widow. And I have no one to protect me. And I don't feel the town is looking at that either. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sherry. Uh, Diane Grunier.
Yes, good evening. Um, on on the issue of the Joshua Tree, um, the new entrance from Wheeling Road. Um, I'm surprised that Jeff Murray is not, um, recusing himself from the discussion and the vote. Um, as he has a personal interest in this issue. I mean, I understand his, his concern and whatever, but as a member of the Board of Selectmen, a voting member. Um, I think it's inappropriate that that he should be in, um, involved in the discussion and the voting on an issue. Where he has a personal interest.
Okay. Anything else, Diane?
No, that, that's pretty much it. Thank you all for all you do. It's always interesting to tuning into these, uh, meetings.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Joanne Ebert.
Um, I just wanted to comment too on the discussion. I can appreciate a good discussion on an issue. And I think a good board should be made up of people that aren't afraid of, you know, having opposing opinions. I'm always outspoken on the board that I'm a part of, and I know that sometimes people get taken aback. But I don't have a problem. I would rather say an issue to someone's face or to bring up an issue. Um, rather than to do it, you know, behind the scenes. That's just the type of person I am. I. Was kind of siding with Paula on this issue with what she brought up, you know. It it's wonderful that Joshua Trust wants to be involved and do a lot for the town. But, um, you know, with the changes and everything, I think it is good that the public's aware of that. And if it becomes too much of an issue, I see their part too. You know, they are, they're coming back and forth each month. And they just want a decision, because if Andover doesn't take it on, then they're going to go somewhere else. Um, yeah, that's what I wanted to say on that. I look forward to seeing how that goes. And, um, and again, it's, it's really good to have debate. If everybody agreed on everything, then, um. It wouldn't come to pass. So that's why I appreciate everyone's opinions when I listen. And why I really do want to hear from the town on a lot of issues where decisions are going to be made. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I think I, uh, covered everyone. Is that accurate? I didn't miss anybody? Leave anybody out?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, we're on to our last item on the agenda. Um, item sixteen, uh, oh no, I'm sorry. We have an executive session. Um, uh, well, I'm going to thank the members of the public for for joining us, uh, Eric, we need to sit there and. Um, I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session and remove all of the. Uh, the members, and I'm going to recommend that we invite, uh, Eric Anderson, Town Administrator and Town Attorney, Dennis O'Brien. Anybody want to make a second that one, and let's get this started? And seconded it, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining us.